Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. First off, a quick roll call. We do have a quorum. Robert Tenney?
Present.
Bill O'Neal?
Present.
Mick O'Neal?
Here.
Charlie Callaway here. Floyd Wambacher?
Present.
Steve Katy?
Here.
Okay. Not present is Rick Pitzel. And who else?
Jack and, uh...
Jack Weedeman?
Yep. Mike.
Nope.
And Janie Bax. Janie no longer?
No, she's not even here.
Okay. All right. Got it.
Mike Wu.
Mike Wu. Thank you. Yep. Okay. So, we've got a few things on the agenda tonight. First thing we need to do is approve the minutes from the last two meetings. May 16th was the first one. I was not present, so do we have anybody that would motion?
I was here. I drafted them. You think they're accurate. It's been a while.
Mm-hmm. We read, I read through them. Everybody motioned to approve the minutes for both May 16th and July?
Stay at one at a time.
Got it. Okay. So, May 16th. Anybody motion?
Approve.
Okay. Anybody second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you much. May 16th minutes have been approved. And now we move to the July 18th minutes. And if we've looked through those, anybody want to motion for approval?
I will.
Mick approves and second?
Second.
Thank you. Bill. Second by Bill. Okay. July 18th minutes approved.
Let's do a vote on each one.
Do we do a vote of each?
Yes.
All in favor for May 16 minutes?
Okay. Just aye?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's six ayes and all in favor of July 18th?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Got it.
All right. Next up, we have a variance applied, application filed by Amy Archdale seeking approval of variance to allow construction of a shed within 25 feet of the front property line on the corner lot on 1117 East Cox Avenue, currently zoned R2. So, if Amy Archdale is here, if you want to come on up and just let us know what you're looking to do, just a quick...
It's already there.
Yeah. Yes.
I just would like to keep it there. It's more for decoration.
Correct. Okay. So, obviously, you've already got it up.
Yes.
You found out that you had to file for a variance.
Yes.
And what, so, I don't see it on here, the kind of pictures of exactly how far it is from the front property line? Did you do the measurements that Rick asked you to do?
Not from the property. From the fence, it is three foot. And then from the house was 14 foot, 6 inches.
Okay. So, that is great, but what we need to know is the measurements from the property lines, correct?
Right. Well, I'm not altogether certain that we need a variance in this situation because of the size and the structure. It's four feet by five feet, right?
Yes.
So, it's not in excess of 25 square feet. Is it permanently mounted?
No.
I don't think that's going to really matter. I'm going to have us go ahead and go through since she applied for variance.
Right.
Based on, but the fact that it's not permanently mounted and it's smaller than qualifies for definition as an accessory structure.
Okay.
I don't think we have any real issue with it.
Okay.
I would encourage everybody to ask any questions they have and maybe we'll go through the criteria, but I'm comfortable that it's not really necessary.
Yeah. Did anybody drive by the...
I did.
I did as well.
I took a look at it. It's a nice-looking structure. You know, she's doing a great job of work on it and you did it all with recycled wood. How's your thumb?
It's healed.
Okay.
Yeah, my digits are...
So, you're playing down all the wood. Check out your thumb.
Got it.
But it's an attractive structure and it's smaller than accessory structure has to be.
Yeah.
So, it's as much as anything a decorative structure that's out there.
Yeah.
It's not permanently affixed to the ground, so it could be moved if there was such a reason to do it, but I don't see any real reason to do this.
And it's not anywhere near an intersection where it might impede views from oncoming traffic either direction?
No. Yeah. I saw no issues with it, especially if you look at the house right across the street, everything they got going on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're on Facebook with that...
They mow their lawn, so I don't care.
...deal about this. The height's happening, so there's photos on there provided by Amy.
Okay.
That kind of shows it's in the corner or driveway.
Yeah. It's behind the fence. It's by the driveway.
I don't think visibility is...
There's no, there's no issues. We had three of us that drove by, so...
Let's, um, let's go ahead and go through the criteria, but unless you have anything else to say, just ask if there's any public comment. We didn't notice it up, so I feel like we should at least entertain...
Okay. Sounds good.
...public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody here to discuss Amy's shed?
It's 1117 Cox.
You are?
I like it.
Got it. You do? Okay. Thank you, sir. She appreciates your support.
He looks right behind her and is great with us.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, um...
Does the motion can be closed then?
Okay.
We should probably, just real quick, round through the variance criteria. You want me to do that?
You can do it. That'd be great. Sure.
Okay. Will the strict application of the terms of the zoning code relate to the use of construction or alteration of buildings and structures or to the use of land opposed to practical difficulties or particular hardship upon the petitioner? We need to say yes if we're...
Robert.
No. Wait.
Yes.
It's been a while. Yes. I say yes if I'm in favor. Correct, yes.
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 Yes. Okay. And if the variance granted, property affected by the variation will remain in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code? Yes.
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 Yes. The approval of variation will not be able to serve as convenience to the petitioner when it's necessary to alleviate some of the monstrosity hardship on the petitioner? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Can a variation requested by the petitioner be granted without substantial detriment to public good? Yes.
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 And can a proposed variation be approved without appearing to general purpose and intent of the conference and plan as implemented by the zoning code? Yes.
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 Okay. Then I need a motion to approve and you can approve with conditions if you so choose or you can just approve as submitted.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Robert.
Mick approved. Robert second.
And you'll want to do a roll call.
Okay. Roll call. Robert?
Aye.
Bill? Mick?
Yeah. Yeah. Aye.
Say "yeti." Charlie? Aye. Floyd?
Aye.
Bill. Okay. All right. That's six, six ayes. Okay? Does that close it up on...
It does.
...the variance? Amy, congratulations on your shed. Looks great. Okay. Second order business is the site plan approval application filed by Bart Coming seeking approval of a site plan for development of a cigar lounge on the property located at 3901 North Prospect Road, Peoria Heights. Currently zoned B2, general retail business district. I think it's right next to that sewing express place or something like that. And then there's a accounting place.
Well, that was the accounting place.
Oh, it was the accounting place?
Yeah.
Oh, the accounting place is the cigar lounge. Okay. It looked like it was the house next to it.
Bart Coming, 423 East Francis, and I own the commercial property at 3901 in question.
Okay.
Yeah. We're the building north of Dr. Scheller's podiatry office and then the Masani Lodge is just south of Dr. Scheller on the west side of Prospect there.
Got it. Okay. You want to tell us just a little bit about it as there... It's just site plan approval. There's no variance or anything. It's just approval of the site plan. Has everybody had a chance to take a look through this and go by the...
Deal.
Is there anything specific you want to tell us or you just want us to, or we can just start asking you a few questions if the group has any?
Well, first of all, accounting's getting really hard and, yeah, you know, once, and so decided it was time to make a change, sold the firm. And as a longtime appreciator of fine cigars, I've noticed over the last few years that in commercial public settings that there's really no place for cigar enthusiasts to sit outside and enjoy a cigar in a public setting. And so, we just want to bring that environment to the Heights and bring a location where people, regardless of their color, creed, race, sexual orientation, whatever their thing might be, we want them to be able to come and enjoy premium cigars in a location where they can feel safe and enjoy it amongst people like-minded.
Okay. Sounds great.
Well, and let's you know, we are not going to have any retail. And that's based on two things right now. Number one, supply chain issues. I don't know if any of you, you know, appreciate fine cigars or fine whiskeys, but if you do, then you obviously know that Arturo Fuente Opus X and Blanton's Bourbon are the holy grails right now and entirely difficult to find. And that coupled with the cost to bring cigars into Illinois, the excise taxes and then the sales taxes on top of that. When we took a look at why previous premier cigar shops in the area haven't been successful, by the time you add on a little bit of a markup to put some food on the table, there's no way you can compete with the online distributors. So, we decided, why fight it? We're just going to form a private club, sell memberships and rent Humidor lockers.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah. Any other questions? Anybody has I can answer?
Bring your own cigars?
Bring your own. You can buy them on Thompson's. You can go five finger discount from the discount smoke shop, you know, whatever you want to do, Floyd. Yeah.
Okay. What's the front edge of it look like? I see that, you know, you've got the deck that you're adding to the front, but what, how are you going to dress up the front of the house? Basically, the house now?
Well, what we're going to do, part of it is to improve the facade and part of it is out of necessity because at the rear entrance to the building will be the primary entrance. But when you go in the back door, you're on a landing and then you've got a hard 90-degree turn to the right, three risers up into the kitchen. So, there's no way we can bring in the Humidor lockers or any of the furniture through that back door. And it'll be incredibly difficult the way that things are set up right now. So, it, the timing is going to be everything on the project. The first thing is going to be to get the deck belt and then demo the existing front entrance and replacing the front door with double French doors that will open up. And then that will allow us to get the larger hardware in and out. And then we're going to do some landscaping around the deck. We did have a pretty old maple tree out there that we were hoping to save and wrap the deck around. That was the original plan. But there was one main limb that was hanging too low and was definitely caused some head trauma. And then a few others that were low enough that, you know, at some point in time, you know, Murphy says somebody's going to try and climb one of those. So, by the time the tree trimmer got done, he had taken over a third of the tree and, you know, told us, he said, "Hey, look, we're not trying to upsell you here, but, you know, we, I seriously doubt this tree is going to survive what we've just done to it." So, instead of build the deck around it and have the tree fall down and destroy the deck, we made the hard choice to just go ahead and take the tree down. But we're currently looking at trees to replace it and plant one in our front yard, so...
Okay. Maybe this isn't for us to figure it out, but as a private club, are there going to be ADA issues that we have to deal with?
Uh, no. As a private club, it is not subject to ADA requirements, but we are working with the contractor to try and figure something out. The, you know, our first original plan, looking at it, was to come to you guys with this wild idea of extending the deck around the driveway and then having a ramp coming up from the driveway. Because the last thing we want is anyone that is handicapped in a wheelchair or with a walker or crutches or, you know, has any sort of mobility issues having to walk from the parking lot in the back down the driveway to access the deck. We did take a look at potentially adding a ramp between the deck and the driveway. There is exactly 36 inches between the edge of the deck and the edge of the driveway. And, you know, I just don't see the structural integrity of the ramp holding up, you know. You just know somebody's going to clip it at some point in time, whether it's one of the members or, you know, snow maintenance in the winter. It, you know, it's just a problem waiting to happen. But we are in conversations with the, with the contractor and we would like to get something figured out because, you know, I, I see the club, my vision is I imagine that during the weekdays, probably going to have a pretty regular crowd of retirees coming in, swapping stories and drinking coffee and smoking cigars. And, you know, as I said earlier, we definitely do not want to exclude anyone from being able to join the club and come in and have the experience.
Are you going to be serving liquor?
We will not be serving liquor ourselves. The top individual membership and the corporate membership will hopefully contain a BYOB aspect where those members will be able to keep spirits on-site for consumption. You know, Administrator Sutton and I have been in contact and I know that Village Council is looking into what we need to do as far as a liquor license for that because obviously, you know, I don't want anybody coming in and just drinking a fifth of Macallan while they're sitting there and then getting behind the wheel of the car and zipping up Prospect. You know, that's obviously not what we want. And we limited the BYOB aspect to only the top individual membership and the corporate membership because, you know, I know Ty Seifert. Ty Seifert is a friend of a friend. So, you know, I know what he's got going on up there at Fluffers. And the last thing I want is somebody with a, our lowest base membership, coming in with, you know, a case of beer and one cigar and sitting there and getting blackout drunk on our property. So, that's why we're limiting it to just the top two memberships.
Will there be any smoking indoors and do you have ventilation taken care of?
Yes. Yes, we do. Yeah. We're going to be using rabbit air purifier systems. We decided against, upstairs, there's a bonus room, more of like a shotgun room that runs the length of the house. And eventually, as we grow, the plan is to remodel that and add that to the lounge. So, we didn't want to put a commercial ventilation system up there and cannibalize some of that space. So, we're going to use wall-mounted rabbit commercial air units.
How high is it elevated? The deck? Is it up?
It will, you know, that's a great question. It'll be the same level as the current deck.
Okay.
Yeah. Because what used to be out there, if you look at the house north, there used to be poured concrete steps that were there. And I, yeah, I think when my dad owned the building, he just built the entry deck over the top of those.
So, it looks like you're a couple feet up, but the yard next door is higher than yours, too.
Yeah.
So, you're not necessarily going to be sticking up, you know, obviously you don't need a front yard setback in the business district like this, but you're not going to be sticking out. It's not going to necessarily be that noticeable looking down the street.
Right. You know, and I mean, and that was definitely a concern, you know, because, I mean, anybody that's gone to lunch at TNT's and, you know, then tried to creep out of the parking lot, turning south on Prospect and stick your nose out there, you know, or down by Supreme Communications when, you know, God, when Katie Katz used to be here, God, I miss him. Yeah.
Any other questions? So, there's, so this is approval of the site plan only, Mark. There's no variance is needed even though it meets, meets all the variance requirements?
As far as I can tell, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The front edge of the deck, you know, the width of the deck is no wider than the house itself. And the front edge is 18 inches inside of the easement.
And like I said, there's no, there's no setback required in business district.
Because it's in the business district now, right? It would be different if it was in a residential...
Gotcha.
Right.
That makes sense. Okay.
You're spot on for recognizing that. Just because it's a house doesn't mean it's residential, so...
Understood. Okay.
Do you know what?
Yeah. Okay. We'll go ahead and open this up to public. If anyone has any public comments, ma'am, go ahead. If you want to come on up and address the group, that'd be great. Just state your name and your address and...
Hi. I'm Janek River, 3814 North Monroe, the old book bindery. That's where we're at. I just wanted to know, can you share with us what your estimated membership prices might be? I mean, I don't know if you've made those decisions yet. They won't be decisions, but estimates. Or is that, is that secret?
Well, yeah. All over the face of our website, our three individual memberships are the Robusto, which is a $30 base membership, and then the Corona, which is a $40 membership, which comes with more perks and including our cigar at the club, which is something that we're offering for value for our members since we're not going to have a retail shop. Once a month, we are going to offer cigars from a different cigar maker or a different country of origin, and those would be complimentary to the members. And then our $50, our Trickkill membership is, which is the highest, is going to include all the previous perks as well as the BYOB potential. And all the membership levels have the ability to rent Humidor lockers as available. And then once a month, we will be having special members only events, parties. We've got Hugh at Heart that has further limited to do a parent cigar in this he parent for us. So, and then the Toro, which is the corporate membership.
I know what you said.
That is, that is $100 a month. And there is, if members pay in advance, we knock off one month. Oh, and all the memberships include, include an option to also add your spouse or significant other for an additional $10. We figure if you both come home smelling like cigars, so then there's no problem.
It's a longer lasting relationship.
Right.
Have you looked at parking?
The address is 3901 North Prospect.
Pardon? Have you looked at parking? How many do you expect to have there at one time?
That's a great question, Mark.
That's a great question. I'm here.
Is, is it the blue house that's next to the podiatry place?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Okay.
So, it was an accounting place. I didn't see a sign for that. But there's like six spots in the back is what I counted.
Well, there's like a seventh, but we are right now negotiating to lease spots from Doc Scheller next door. He leases his parking lot from the lodge, and so we're going to sublease spots at the back of the lot. And, you know, really, because the only time that I anticipate us needing additional parking will be on the weekends and during the evenings, especially on maybe Thursday evenings because that's the night we're planning on having our, our monthly member get-together or event. And then I know my, my partner and wife is also wanting to develop a ladies cigar club for, for up there as well. But so, the times that we will need the additional parking, Dr. Scheller won't be having office hours.
Right. Okay.
And, you know, I mean, we, we could just park there, you know, free of charge because he's not going to be there and no one better. But, you know, that's a Richard move and, you know, I would rather, you know, pay for the spots and have something right and help him pay for the maintenance on it. You know, that, that's the, that's the only way to do business as far as I'm concerned.
How many spots does he have that you're going to try to run for?
Oh, my gosh. Overall, I'm guessing, I'm spitballing here, 30?
Okay.
30. And then actually behind the lodge itself, there's another four or five. Because we had a deal worked out with them during tax season because only having, you know, the six spots there in the parking lot, myself and the employees, we would park down behind the lodge and free up the parking lot for our clients.
How many people will be able to be in this, how, in this business?
You know, I haven't, as far as, you know, what Fire Marshal would set the limit at, you know, I'm not sure. We will have seating. We're having 15 leather chairs, two leather couches and two leather love seats brought in. So, from that standpoint, we have seating for 25. And we are having a custom bar built. In the dining room, there is a built-in china hutch that will act as the, as the bar back. And so, we're having a custom bar built for in front of that, which we will have potentially three more stools there. So, 28, you know, probably about 30 people, including staff.
Have you completely opened up the whole floor plan?
We are. We are. It used to be like a lot of the houses on that block, there used to be an enclosed porch and, and then a huge L-shaped grate room that probably acted as a parlor and then, you know, sitting room, dining room, and then master off of that. The master off of the grate room, we're going to have a semi-private lounge room in there that our corporate members will be able to, you know, borrow for meetings, entertain clients.
Okay. Got it. Anyone else? Any other questions from the public? Okay. Closes up the public forum.
Thank you.
And now we just go ahead and take, go through the fact and recommendations.
We must have a discussion before we get to that.
Oh, yeah. Any discussion from the panel?
Comments, thoughts?
I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It's meeting all the requirements.
I will read through the various criteria and what's asked and what, and yes would be the answer for open, no would be. If you don't, we will just follow by. So, the first item is the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a special use or site plan will not be determined to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, confidence, or general welfare.
Yes.
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 Special use or site plan will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood in which it is to be located.
Yes.
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 The establishment of the site plan will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property uses permitted in the district.
Yes.
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 Animal facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided.
Yes.
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 Applicable measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designated as minimize traffic congestion in the public streets.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
If a public use or use provided public utilities that's not applicable, special use or site plan shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may, in each instance, modify or some interpretation of zoning law. And I don't think there are any, any variances of any type or request for you.
Okay.
Yes.
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 So, any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
You seconded, okay. Now, go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay. Robert?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mick?
Yes.
Charlie?
Aye.
Floyd?
Aye.
Steve? That's six, six affirmatives.
Perfect.
Sound good? All right. Look forward to having a cigar.
Look forward to seeing you down.
Do you, we saw a map here where there, it says the Ash Cigar Room, kind of right where that spot is, is that what you're calling this, and you already have it listed on the Google Maps? Ash Cigar Lounge, yeah, so it's already on Google Maps.
The, the first 15 days of July, we had 4,000 hits.
Wow.
Yeah, we think this is going to be pretty big. We're, we're already making plans for a second location potentially.
Sounds great. Good luck.
Thank you.
It's happening in the Heights, okay. All right, third item on the list is an amendment to Title 10, Chapter 13, Section 5 of the Village Code pertaining to hours of operation of adult-use cannabis dispensing organizations. So first, there's an amendment, and then we'll have a discussion item with the dispensary a little bit later on, but you want to walk through this amendment, Mark?
Absolutely. Couple of years back, we adopted an ordinance that permitted dispensaries, cannabis dispensaries, under the newly approved adult-use cannabis statute. And in doing so, we established dispensary hours as being limited from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And at the request of a proposed dispensary, we've been asked to extend the evening side and the hours limitation from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So we're just extending it by two hours to that symbol.
Okay, and this is just a, this is a request that we're, and this is the first time we've done something like this, that I've been...
Yeah, so, so that's a good point, that's a good point, Charlie, thank you for that. The zoning ordinance, all, the entire section of the Village Code pertaining to zoning, anytime there's an amendment to one of those ordinances that somebody seeks, you know, whether it's a private citizen, or the village wants it, or the zoning board can initiate it, but anytime there's any proposed amendment, the zoning board has to first conduct a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. The ordinance has to be put in front of the zoning board, which it is, you know, the proposed ordinance. The zoning board conducts the public hearing, hears input from the public, pros and cons, and then takes a vote on whether to recommend approval to the village board. The zoning board doesn't adopt ordinances, you're just acting in an advisory capacity to hold a public hearing, get the information out there, hear from the public, and then make a recommendation one way or another.
Got it, okay.
And then it would go to the village board for final approval.
Okay. Everybody got that? Yeah, something a little bit new for us, at least for me?
Yeah, sure, you're right, this is the first time we've had one for a poll.
Okay, so, pretty straightforward that we're just being asked to change it from 7:00 p.m. closing to 9:00 p.m. closing, starting at 8:00 a.m.
Correct.
So, should we...
Closing hours are not being changed, it's just closing time.
Yeah, should we open it up to public first and then have a conversation? Okay, all right, anybody in the building here, here to talk about this or ask questions about this? Ma'am, you want to go and come on up and...
Nobody else has a question, okay. I have the same address as last time. I would just, I would just request to know just a little bit more, is this limited to commercial? Where, what are the zoning uses that would allow this? I mean, I'm not sure I want it in a residential area, or by a school, or, I mean, like, what are the rules?
There are, I, I can't remember how far away from a school it has to be, I think it's 500 feet, it might be 1,000, and a lot of that's dictated by state statute.
That's okay.
And it, it is only allowed in, in commercial, in the business zones, so you wouldn't have this in a, in a residential zone. They would have to get that property rezoned and go through all the hoops to get it rezoned, and, and I can't imagine that happening.
Mark, we're going to be talking about this with the dispensary, a proposed dispensary later. Do we, do we know, like, tonight?
Like where?
Do we know where?
The estimate or the proposal is...
It's on War, but I do not know the address.
It's 1209, it's the third and fourth, have Google Maps on it in our little thing.
1209 War Memorial?
It's the vacuum store.
Oh, it's the vacuum store.
Now, that's down the street from me, thank you.
But, just to kind of back up what she said, because that's one of the things, you know, since we're not necessarily addressing this particular location, it does have to be in a business district, because that's when all of a sudden you get to the nine, nine o'clock hours.
Correct, it does need to be in a business zone, and it is in fact in a business zone, and you're...
But is it right next to a residential, or where does that...
It's close.
You know, if it's like the last business before residential.
That can happen, because obviously at some point, you transition from business to residential. So, understand though, this has universal application, so you're not just approving this for one specific site, you're approving it, you're being asked to consider an ordinance amendment that would apply across the board to any dispenser located anywhere in town in any of the business zones.
That's what I'm concerned about, and I'd like to, you know, if there's any way we can hold off on this or we can get some sort of backup on what sort of setback one of these dispensers would need out of a residential area? If there is a, if we do have a 500-foot or 1,000-foot?
Only from schools, I can tell you there is no setback from residential zones. As, as currently applied, it does need to be, I think it's 1,000 feet away from schools.
It says 100 feet.
500?
Yeah, I was going to say it's...
It says 100 feet.
No, it's like ridiculously not far, it's like 100 feet. 500 and 1,000, that's like, that's like for sexual offenders.
100 feet of the property line or pre-existing school, daycare, park, library, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, I, I thought it was more than that, but...
Well, I'm looking on a map, there is residential right next door that starts. And so it's just that side of, on War Memorial, and then right after those businesses, it starts to get residential, so.
So this location rule that they're citing for this spot, is that a local ordinance or is that dictated by the state?
Hey, Mark?
Yeah.
Question from, from Robert?
In this packet for this building, which we're obviously putting everything together sort of for sure, these are local rules, but they're based on the state regulations?
The, the state gives the municipality some parameters within which to operate, we can, we can bar, you know, command them altogether, or we allow them. We can't go below the minimum state requirement. So, hours of operation is completely up to municipality.
Okay, so we could impose a bigger setback?
We could.
But there's not, not us, but the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Do we know what the hours are in Peoria for there?
That's a really good question.
I, I'll look real quick, I like that, what's it called?
Trinity?
Trinity, yeah, let me look at that real quick.
Because the way I'm looking at this, for the hours itself, it's more of a giving some more time for people that work a 9:00 to 5:00.
Right.
So, they close at 7:00.
Okay.
And they're 10:00 to 7:00. So for me, I mean, 8:00 a.m., and then 7:00 p.m., I mean, that's, you know, you've got a pretty good long time to go get what you need, I guess, if you're mean that, so. Is there anybody else here to discuss the proposed change in timeframe? Any other questions or comments from, from...
So I just looked at the one in East Peoria, they close at 8:00.
They close at 8:00?
It is 100 feet setback from schools.
So, I mean, it's right on War Memorial, it's a very business street. I know it's down further, but you got Cruisin's open till who knows when. Not a whole lot else is really open.
Right.
At night, other than Cruisin's.
Right.
Which is a little bit, you know, later. This is across the street and no more towards Prospect.
Again, it's really important to understand, if we change this, it would...
Yeah.
That's what I think.
Located anywhere in the business district, so you gotta, you gotta, I'm not saying it's inappropriate to consider this specific site, but you also need to consider what if another one applies in a different location, it may or may not be as appropriate to allow the open.
I just did, so, just for, just for the sake of conversation, I just did cannabis dispensary search nearby, I'm getting dozens of them, and it is 9:00 to 7:00, 9:00 to 8:00, 10:00 to 7:00, 8:00 to 8:00, I've seen, I'm seeing nothing later than 8:00. Here's a 9:00 to 6:00, so, and this is all in the general areas within 100 miles, so, 6, 7, 8.
You guys, it sounds like you're talking apples and oranges, dispensaries v. lounges. So dispensary hours would probably be different than lounge hours, just an observation, I don't know, but...
Right. So, let's go back, that's a good question, I mean, what, what are the hours that you would be?
We are, we're going to be closed Mondays, Tuesdays through Thursday, 11:00 to 8:00 or 9:00, depending, we're going to wait and see what traffic looks like. And then Fridays, Fridays and Saturdays, 11:00 to 11:00, and 11:00 to 5:00 on Sundays.
Okay, so you're staying later, I mean, this is, this is technically retail.
Yeah, this is a different situation.
Different situation, I'm just curious, because you brought it up. But, so it's retail, we're seeing the latest 8:00 at the moment.
But I'm just wondering... We don't have anything that allows consumption in the Heights, I think, I think this...
No, that's just retail.
Right, and it's, and I don't, you know, I'm not sure how they're set up over in Peoria. I know that, you know, when they first opened, there were long lines and everything else, but I don't think that's going to be the situation if you open up one in the Heights now. I mean, I have no idea, if, you know, if Saturday night at 9:00, there's, you know, cars parked all over out there, but I don't think there are anymore. I don't think there's necessarily a big run at any time, so I don't know.
I just looked, I only see one consumption lounge in the state of Illinois that opened in April in Chicago, so...
I know they're talking about having one down in Farmington Road.
Correct.
But, that's not what we're dealing with here. This is, this is retail area.
So, retail only, it's in a business district, it's right next door to a neighborhood. I think there's a fence there that kind of makes it a little bit more private.
I think for the general ordinance, what I would think is, the extension to 9:00 p.m. seems to help Heights residents that may want to purchase from there, because many Heights residents works a 9:00 to 5:00, 9:00 to 6:00, 8:00 to 5:00, 8:00 to 6:00. So it gives a little bit more extra time, that kind of thing. So the question to me on this proposal isn't where this site is, because we can say no to this site later today, is, is that extension to 9:00 p.m. appropriate in all of the Heights? And recommend some setbacks or whatever to the board later?
Yeah, that's, we're just talking about the timeframe, so. And does anybody else have any other comments on that?
As little as I know about these things, it's not my, my vice of choice. But it sounds like, you know, from what I've seen, where they have dispensaries, there's not necessarily a long line at the end of the day, where I think that's the only thing we would have to be concerned about, about keeping this open till 9:00, is if all of a sudden, that's going to be a big increase in whatever business district it happens to go into, a big increase in traffic volume at that site, and I don't see that happening.
But if the traffic volume is fine earlier in the day, why does it matter? The question becomes, do we, do we want it to stay up until 9:00 where it's located? Or we find a 7:00, or do we want to say, you know what, maybe we're okay with 8:00?
This 9:00 is wherever this one would happen to be, that's, this is going to be...
You guys' biggest point is that the number of customers probably doesn't change. The lines change because there's too less hours, so they would all come in at the same time rather than get spread out, or someone might leave in first.
Right now, 8:00 to 7:00, they've got...
Yeah.
Right.
11 hours.
Saying, you know, what's the inconvenience, what's the harm to the village, to the people in the village by staying open till 9:00? I don't think there's necessarily an increase in traffic, there is not a problem to the neighborhood since this is just a retail business.
Mark?
Point of clarification, because every cannabis establishment, dispensaries we're talking about tonight, but the growing, every establishment requires a special use permit. You know, just because they're located in the business district doesn't mean, you know, they, they come before the zoning board each specific site, so that you have to convince the zoning board and the village board that that site is appropriate. And you always can grant a special use with conditions. So, if you extend, if you were to extend the hours, the general hours of operation from 7:00 to 9:00, you could in the future have an application and say, you know what, that spot might be appropriate, but not until 9:00, you know, that spot is appropriate to close at 7:00. So, I don't want to misinform the board that you don't have the ability to condition a future site approval on certain specific hours outside of what the general hours are. But this, what's facing us tonight, is a general ordinance applied to any dispensary that is otherwise not restricted, so.
So us recommending...
This makes it probably more difficult.
Us recommending a change isn't really going to affect anything on the special use, it's just kind of a...
Correct.
A trumpet call of saying, hey, we're open to letting you be open till then, but we don't know yet.
Correct, and, and you'll get a chance to weigh in on a special use. If you don't amend this to extend the hours to 9:00 p.m., you can't as a condition extend the hours. You can compress them, but you can't extend them. Just like when you're granting a variance, you can say, well, you know, we'll, we'll do that if you only have, you know, six parking spaces. You can't, you can always restrict things, but you can't, you can't expand. So if somebody came in and was asking for, as part of their special use, extended hours, you wouldn't have the authority to do that without again amending the ordinance, so...
But we could say, approved, but only till 7:00.
You gotta keep it within more limited hours than are otherwise generally applicable.
So do we, do we, is there a similar type of, I mean, I know we're just going to be recommending to the, to the village board, so how do we, how do we...
You guys just, you've already discussed it, so it's just a, a roll call vote on whether to recommend for or against approval.
Can we, just before we do that, does everybody feel okay with this, or do we feel that we should recommend maybe an 8:00 timeframe? I've not seen anything later than 8:00 on anything else that I've seen.
The number of bars that are in this town anyway that are open past 9:00, I don't see a big difference, and, not to get into the science of it, I'm not a, you know, I'm, I'm not going to be a customer, but I do appreciate the science behind it, and you, you know, I, I would, you know, someone driving away at 8:55 with their purchase is not going to be any different than someone who has, you know, put four or five away at Pizza Works and is heading home. You know, it's, it's right there near all the houses and everything, and I don't see any sort of an issue with that.
Okay, any other public?
If I could offer something, I, I think that that 7:00 to 9:00 time slot with the beer league softball right down the street at the stadium, I, I think you would have some pretty decent traffic flow probably. You know, just, just saying from a, from a location point of view. I think once they knew that was there, that you'd probably get those beer league softball types stopping in before or after, you know, on their way to the bar, or before they even get to the game. Because you have all that traffic, you know, pretty much from spring through fall.
You're counting.
That's why Cruisin's is there, right?
Yeah.
Because this, once again, this isn't going to be, you can't use it there, this is a dispensary.
Right.
So, but if you're talking about the 8:00, how do we do this? Could you propose that it changes?
You would, you would make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Well, I was going to maybe do that, but I wanted to get the, you know, and I would agree that 9:00 really isn't a big deal either, I mean, you got Cruisin's open till, whatever, 2:00 in the morning, probably, midnight, so...
I think I would recommend approving the 9:00, because we can still...
We can approve the 9:00, but then we can always restrict it, okay.
You can imagine that.
That's kind of where I was headed when she said that.
So, same with most retail things, I would...
Another comment, ma'am?
It's not necessary to hear from me, but I would offer to be the latest ordinance in the whole state, with the exception of one in Chicago. I'm not really excited about that. I'm open to 8:00, much more than I am to 9:00, but I'm not a voter, and you guys are, I mean, I'm...
Well, we have, we have public comment for a reason, we, you know, we take input, you know, and I, I'd go back out, I mean, maybe we've never done this before, but who, who thinks 9:00 is good versus an 8:00? Does it, does it really matter? You guys see the point, that does it matter that it's 9:00, we got bars open till whoever? So, it's six at one, half a dozen at the other at this point.
The Chicago thing, I think, was for the first one in Illinois to actually be able to use the product on the premises, so there might be, you know, without...
But her comment to be, we'd be the latest open dispensary in the state, when everybody else, well...
We don't know if Chicago would, you know, without doing an extensive search.
Correct.
You know, that's...
Mark, how much does the municipality get on taxes from this kind of stuff?
Good question.
Quite a bit, but I also recognize percentage.
Okay, so if we were opening it up farther than many other locations, we would kind of be a draw?
That's true.
If they were approved, correct?
That's true.
Here's one up in Chicago, that's 9:00 p.m., so. All right, well...
If state doesn't restrict that, you, like, how close are you?
So, yeah, so let's go ahead and, and we'll go ahead and roll call, and, and we will put a motion forward, you want to put it?
I'll move to approve the 9:00.
Okay, motion forward to approve the 9:00, take a vote.
I'll second.
Second? Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Six ayes. Floyd.
I'll take it.
So, Robert, Robert made the motion and Floyd seconded. And you've got six...
I thought Mick made it.
I made the motion.
Mick made the motion.
I'm sorry.
Not yet.
Yep.
And Floyd seconded?
Yep, sorry. Robert was the one that asked the question before, okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so that's the third item of business, good to go. Okay, the next two items are just for discussion only. We have, first up, Beck's Car Wash, and then we'll talk about the cannabis, cannabis dispensary after that, so. Beck's Car Wash, do we have anybody here that is representing the Beck's Car Wash? You want to come on up and tell us who you are and?
Mark, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
As Barnesworth Group is a client, should I be abstaining from this one?
It's just a discussion at this point, so we know.
So we're voting later, brother?
Perhaps, yeah.
Hi, everyone, I'm Heather Raffelson, I'm from Beck Oil Company, and here today to answer any questions and represent Beck's.
Okay, so you're, we're not here to vote on anything in particular, but we're just here to see if there's anything that comes up, so we're ready for it when you take a vote, correct?
Sure.
Okay, so this is over in the big spot over there on War Memorial? You've got nice plans here, it looks like? You want to just tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do?
Yeah, sure, so this is a full development, that's been a long time coming, so we are really excited to finally be at this point. So it is a C store, gas station, and car wash development that is just shy of about three acres there, about two and a half acres, so we, as you know, have purchased and demolished several buildings to get to this point, and so this is the new proposed plan with a lot of, there's a lot going on here, but with, that shows all of the, the egress, the entrances, kind of the layout, the parking, the access to the wash, the, the lines, the access in and out to the gas canopy and the C store.
So this is a great plan, and obviously a lot of detail, are there any variances that we're going to be asking for, do we know?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and so this meets all, meets all requirements?
Mm-hmm.
This, so I'm looking at exhibit one, which is the main plan of what it really looks like here, so I'm assuming that the street here closest to me is War Memorial, right?
The street closest to you is Paris.
That's Paris?
Yes.
Paris is at the bottom.
Yep, the bottom, and then the top of the page is War.
So that's where all the traffic's going to be coming in and out of the car wash?
From War, correct. Yeah, the intention is for the majority of the traffic to come in that right in, right out, that you see at the top of the page, from War, and then it will kind of loop around, and they can either turn left into the C store, there's two entrances into the C store or the gas canopy, or they can turn right and get in line immediately for the left turn into the car wash, if you are following along.
So there's a big entrance up on top from War.
Yes.
And then there's a side entrance over here on Central.
Correct.
That's going to get to the gas and the convenience store, and the, there's two, there's two entrances on Paris, one going into the car wash space, and one going in and.
Into the center road, where you can access either.
You can go to High.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that what all the lines are?
Yes, so there's, off of Paris, you can either immediately turn in right to the gas station, or there's a second entrance, a little bit, I guess that would be west of there, or immediately turn left into the car wash.
Got it.
So the intention is for the majority of the traffic to be coming off of Central or War, if there's, there's going to be very nominal traffic coming in from Paris, it's, it's mostly an exit, or ideally, they are using a potential discount from their car wash, then go fuel at the gas station.
So you're talking about, you've got intersection coordination with IDOT upstairs now, are there going to be changes to that? Because obviously, if you're heading west on War, you're not going to be able to come in, fill the wide drive, you're going to have to use the intersection up here at Central.
This is, I'm Wayne Aldrich, I think I'm most of you, the community development director, so, for Peoria Heights, so part of my role is communication with developers, and in this case, IDOT, so IDOT has been involved, so the intersection at Central, there will most likely be signal improvements at that intersection because of this development, and also because of proposed development to the north.
Okay.
That coordination has been made, initial steps. The, what we would call right in, right out at that new entrance, this is also being coordinated with IDOT as we speak, actually, so.
Right.
They've seen this plan, and have sort of directed us in this way, because they really don't want access onto, any new access onto War Memorial Drive. So as you're familiar with that, and you've seen a lot of these right in, right outs along War Memorial Drive, because that's all IDOT will allow there, and only allow it from a public street. So in this case, IDOT has suggested that this access in the center of the development be a public street. So we're, we're just kind of complying with IDOT's initial comments on this, and we're waiting to hear back if they have any other comments related to this access control and what we would call geometrics of the intersections and things like this.
Thanks, so coordinating with IDOT on both of them, and I know you've got one of the best civil engineers in Central Illinois working on this thing, so I knew it was taken care of.
So hold on, so if I'm coming in, again, I'm coming in that center line, I'm having to come all the way through, all the way to Paris, then turn on Paris to get into the car wash, is that correct?
No, that, you can turn where there's a little curb cut.
I got you, I'm seeing it.
Right in, and then you would get into the, you see the three lanes for the car wash, and then that would be a left turn into the car wash. Yep, so you do not have to access Paris at all.
Okay, that's.
Unless you are intentionally coming from Paris.
Got it, so I could come in, come to the car wash, come out, and not even get on Paris at all, okay?
Yep, exactly.
Now, if I recall, there's only one driveway slash house on this part of Central, correct?
That's a good question.
Because there's, I know there's one immediately past this on War Memorial.
Right.
And I know there are some down Central, but on our plan, there's only one that this traffic would get in front of, is that right? I think Google Maps shows that, but I'm also not sure if it's actually a Paris Avenue address or not.
I'm not sure which house you're talking about.
There's a purply looking house on the corner of Central and War Memorial.
Right.
And then the one right behind, I think is one that Robert is speaking of.
Yeah, there's one behind it down Central, but I don't know if that's the central, their garage is on Central, or there's a driveway, but I don't know if that's, they're only in and out.
I believe it is. It's, it's kind of a yellow house, and the garage is double car, and then they've done something with their fence recently, where they got like a little, I don't know if it's a kid's house or whatever, but they, they do have a privacy fence on that house, for what it's worth.
And no one's here today from that house, is there?
Right next to the alley, I'll go back.
So would these signal improvements include lane improvements and markings and everything, I would assume, for Central?
Can't imagine they're not, IDOT is very much.
It, it may not look a lot different here, as far as the central avenue, having approved signalization, crosswalks, things like that.
What kind of traffic are you expecting? I know we've had a situation in Peoria with a car wash recently, that everyone was up in arms about, you know, what's going to happen with traffic there. I don't think it ever turned out as bad as they feared, but what kind of traffic are you expecting with this? Traffic finds, especially at car wash?
So we've had tremendous amount of hours of traffic studies and design studies that have gone into this, and we feel that we have the site laid out. This has been six months of site work, just trying to make sure that the traffic flows in and out are as least invasive as possible to the residential areas, and of course, we all know that IDOT is very particular about the safety and making sure that this traffic comes in and out as cleanly as possible, so at this point, I guess my best answer is that we've, we've done a tremendous amount of homework, and making sure that the traffic can get in and out of here as user-friendly as possible. You don't want a convenience store that's not convenient, so I guess that's my best answer. I can give you exact traffic counts, I mean, we've done traffic counts and, you know, on all of the roads, and I can get.
I think that's what Mick's asking, is, I mean, do you have an idea of how many people you think will be visiting the gas station, the convenience store, and what do you project?
The only, the only potential problem I see on this, and I, I don't see it happening, but I just wanted to make sure, look at it, you know, you've got your right in, your right out, if there's any way possible, that could end up being backed up under War Memorial, because that's the only place you'd have to worry about any sort of traffic with this thing. It looks like you've got plenty of room in there, you've got a real tight turn to get back into lanes to get into the car wash, but, you know, is there any?
You're asking about, particularly for the car wash line, if they were to be backed up there?
That seems to be where you'd, where you'd worry about having a big backup.
Sure, yeah, so we have added a third lane, I don't know if you've been to the location in Pekin, but the traffic count in front of the Pekin location is significant, and we only have two lanes there, so we've added a third lane in order to help accommodate that as best as possible, and it is a much longer lane, so we have that potentially, I, I don't foresee this being an issue, but stacking power in three lanes, and then all down that road if that were to ever be necessary, but that's, that's never been a problem at the, at the Pekin location. We turn those cars through there very quickly, and we can stack them. I believe that we can, at the, at our highest capacity, we, I don't, I don't want to misquote this, but we, we can wash, like, sixty cars an hour or something like that, I mean, that thing turns and it can stack very quickly, there's a lot of safety signals that go on that we can get them, get them in there very efficiently.
Okay, it's just, you know, I'm sure it's been.
Yeah, that's, that's a very valid question, yeah.
You know, if we're looking at a site plan, we've got to worry about the traffic patterns.
Absolutely, mm-hmm.
Yeah, but if IDOT's involved with this.
Sure.
They're doing a lot of our job, not a lot of our job, but really.
That's a right turn lane only onto Central, right? And it starts right in front, am I reading this map right?
That's correct, yes.
Is there a way that, if necessary, that can be extended down to provide extra?
IDOT's very specific about that, because they don't want that access, that right in, right out to a pro turn, that term, not too much.
Okay.
So, so the Barnesworth Group is doing an intersection design study, so all those numbers will be known, as far as storage in that turn lane, that type of thing.
Now, given the site plan, and we're just talking in general, right?
Right, so that is being.
If that, if that is an issue, I mean, we can, Barnesworth can come prepared for the next meeting, certainly.
Will there be any alterations to Central there regarding the width? I can see people coming out onto Central because they want to turn left onto War Memorial, I can just picture that, a narrow little area being backed up.
I, I think there will be some, because of the, what we would call the geometrics of the intersection and the type of design vehicles, so I think there is a widening of that, that area there.
Okay.
I imagine.
The light, that intersection may make a difference.
Yeah, I imagine that light will be shorter for War Memorial, because I've sat there for what seems like ten minutes, which turns on sometimes, so.
Is there anybody here in the audience that is here to talk about this, or has questions about this? Ma'am, go ahead.
I have one.
Sure.
Okay, Anne Monhardt, during the construction around War Memorial, traffic coming from the McClygge Bridge, when they hit that stoplight in Prospect, will they be turning onto Prospect to go through the Heights, Prospect to go downtown, especially Prospect to go through the Heights? So they will increase traffic going through the Heights, so they can turn on Lake Street or go straight to North?
Oh, that's a good question, during construction, if they're going to block off some of War, if it's going to cost. Because I think you were talking about the site on Glen, that everyone thought it would reduce traffic.
Yeah.
And it really, the construction was the only thing that would reduce traffic.
Yeah, and this doesn't look like necessarily there's going to be a lot of construction, granted, the intersection isn't showing on this, but this should be minimal construction actually out on War. There's going to be a new.
Yeah, I would say, you know, there, I would say there wouldn't be some lane closures during the day, but most of them would be on the south side.
Yep.
For Beck's, there might be some turn lane construction, curb getter construction, that type of thing, that might require some lane restrictions during the day, I would think, but.
But no detours.
I, I wouldn't expect that IDOT would allow them to.
Yeah, you might, you might think that a lot of the traffic that's coming is going to be pulling into this place.
Yeah, right.
So we're looking, I see store manholes are under War, so are we looking at tying into War, or are we tying into the area off Central of Paris? Or water and drinking?
For stormwater, lower do you have?
I do, the stormwater will go to the south, actually, the site drains to the south, so we go to Paris, and what's not shown on here is our underground retention system that we're going to put, it'll be in pretty much where the three lanes are for the car wash, we're putting that into the village code, so that we, our discharge is stored before through these.
And that's like a ninety percent retention rate for car washes or something?
Well, that's for the stormwater.
Okay.
I don't know, who was about the car wash, I don't know if the car wash exactly works, but.
As far as what drains?
But it goes to sanitary.
Yes, it goes to sanitary.
Yeah, better than sanitary.
Yes.
Is that going south as well?
Yes, everything's going south.
Everything's going south.
Sanitary storm, and then the water will come from the south as well. I'm trying to say out of War Memorial.
Any other comments or questions? All right?
Make sure there are male ginkgo trees that are put in there along Paris, they'll put the female ones, and then it'll stink up the whole neighborhood.
Oh.
I mean, I saw, that's the first thing I thought of.
That's insightful, yeah.
Male ginkgo trees.
Okay, noted, yes.
Are they an invasive species? I'm going to pretend I'm Janie right now.
Janie.
No, if you're downtown, they line downtown with the female ones, in fall, when the berries fall, it's.
It looks, actually, I've got a, those trees that you got along Paris, it looks like you're doing a job of trying to really cut it, shut it off, I mean, are those trees meant to grow and really become?
Yeah, we've done a lot of research on exactly what kind of trees, and I can't think of the name of them right now, but to detonate the sound as much as possible, and also be a visual barrier to help the residential area across the street on Paris.
The pineus flexus.
Sure.
Tiger wolf's pine, right outside the car wash, I think that's probably the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we showed in here.
Is that what it is?
It's a separate debate, we're just trying to pick.
Pick something.
That's good for them, they'll sit on sleep.
But you are doing it to block off noise and.
Yeah, noise and visually, to try to just be as good of neighbors as we possibly can there.
You are going to burn them, okay.
Yeah.
That, that's great, I, I, we had a car wash that was looking at this earlier, and our biggest concern was the people on Paris.
Sure.
And because they were, all the traffic was designed to come out on Paris, and, you know, that wasn't, so we weren't involved in that. Any other questions or comments from anyone else?
Only thing I can, is this, if I may.
Go ahead.
Is that the sidewalks are widened to six feet lower, so that, that's just something to think about along this corridor, because a lot of times it's forgotten, the pedestrian aspect, so in the comprehensive plan, you might know, you know, pedestrians and bikes are important, so, so in this case, the sidewalks are widened six feet, that is appropriate for, or just, you know, I'd remind the board to keep that in mind as, as you, you know, look at other developments, you know.
So that sidewalk is six feet wide around the entire perimeter?
I believe so.
It's six feet wide on War Memorial, I don't believe we have it six feet wide on Paris, so it's wide as it will be for, it's not in either, and we did pull the sidewalk around on Central as well, there's not a sidewalk there now, but we are showing the sidewalk on the left side.
And Mark, we can get into more like trees and stuff when we get the site plan?
When we get to the formal herbal, which we have.
It doesn't look like there's a lot going on, on that Central.
Or even. Just one entrance.
Mm-hmm, just the one entrance.
In terms of the greenery, or, is it going to be burned around the whole thing, or just on the Paris side?
I think just on the Paris side as of right now.
Yeah, the building actually sits quite a bit lower than the street, so we don't really want to burn it up anymore, because it does fall pretty fast to the south, so we're trying not to, we don't want to.
Right.
Want to see the store and everything from Central and from War Memorial, so.
Absolutely.
We don't have all the landscaping shown on here, but we wanted to point out the stuff on the south end as a kind of a buffer area.
Okay, got it, good, thanks.
Yeah, and we'll do a lot of landscaping around the monument signs for both the C Yeah, and we'll do a lot of landscaping around the monument signs for both the C-Store gas station and the car wash and then some landscaping around the, around the store.
Got it. We'll talk more about, maybe talk a little more about signage when you, do you have the signage on the site plan or is that-
They've got both signs, yeah.
Do we have it in here?
Show locations.
Show locations.
Don't show the elevations or anything, I don't look for them quite right yet.
Okay.
I did share pictures, I think if you guys received an email of those a couple weeks ago of our Washington location, it'll be very similar to the sign at our Washington location and then the, the car wash sign will be very similar to the Pekin car wash sign.
Okay.
Just for a reference point. And landscaping as well would be very similar to those.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Last item for discussion would be the cannabis dispensary. Is anyone here representing the dispensary?
Online.
Oh, that's right, online.
Yeah, he's there, right, here you go.
And, so we're, and, and his name is?
Connor.
Connor, you there?
I am here.
Okay, I've got you turned up now. All right, Connor, do you want to? Yeah, go ahead.
You, you can hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you perfect.
Okay. And do you have copies of the packet that I sent to Sarah?
We do, the Project Equity Illinois PowerPoint deck.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we have that, we all have that in front of us.
Just one point of clarification before I get started. The operational hours item that you were discussing, was that in relation to us?
It would be in relation to you, yes. It was a separate line item, just talking about the proposed change in hours and if that goes through, then that would affect your, your timing, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Because I, I will address that in a little bit of detail toward the end of this, but I will, I'll keep that in mind.
Sure.
So, I can talk fast or go a little bit slower, but generally this will be about 10 minutes, maybe 10 to 15. I just want to tell you a bit about our team and about our proposal and then some of our plans and hopefully get your feedback. We were fortunate enough to be able to schedule this with the board just as a discussion item so that we can come back in September and incorporate whatever feedback you provide and, and then have it as hopefully an action item to vote on at that point. So this, this is a good opportunity for us to be able to hear from you and, and you to hear from us. So Project Equity Illinois is what I like to call the super friends of cannabis. It is about six principals, each with years of experience in the regulated cannabis industry in, I think, six different regulated states at this point. So California, Washington, Maine, Hawaii, Illinois obviously forthcoming, and I think there's one other. And of the six principals, four of us are actually Illinois natives. I'm the, I'm the one or two exception. You see me over there on the, in the right little bubble, but John Rushing is our social equity partner. He lives in Palanting. He's a military vet and business owner. His son James is also a partner in PEI, grew up in the Chicago area, now lives in California. He taught cannabis cultivation and botany in Hawaii at the college level and has been a part of regulated cannabis stores and cultivation facilities in multiple states. Johnny Delaplane originally grew up in Bloomington and then I think bounced around to another city in Illinois whose name is escaping me, but he was originally a cultivator and then started opening stores. He and I own a couple stores together in California and he currently works for a multi-state cannabis operator doing retail development and, and other business development in the regulated cannabis market. Going sort of back up to 1 o'clock here on the, on the image, MMAC is the Medical Marijuana Acquisition Company. It is based primarily out of Texas, but they created the brand Project Cannabis, which operated several stores in California and had, the company MMAC has a pretty healthy investment fund that they have raised from investors in their network that they use to fund cannabis projects, primarily retail, although they've done cultivation as well. So MMAC is sort of our institutional partner that is providing us the funding to purchase real estate in markets where we need to or to make long-term TI improvements to real estate that we lease, which is what we're hoping to do here. I mentioned myself, I'm from California and own a couple stores in the San Francisco area and previously worked in local government myself. I was the chief of staff to London Breed, who is now the mayor of San Francisco. And lastly, my partner Quentin is from Batavia. He's on the call with us today. He is a commercial construction executive, or was, I should say, and then segwayed into the regulated cannabis industry and is partners with me and Johnny on multiple projects and will be overseeing the construction for our projects in Illinois. And also on the call is our partner Leanne Benj on behalf of MMAC. So that is, that's the team. It is primarily an Illinois-based or at least Illinois-derived team. We all have individual expertise and experiences that collectively or probably represent decades in the cannabis industry and we have, we have the finances and the know-how to develop stores and make sure they are successful and contributing parts of the community. I can stop here or just please interject at any point if anyone has any questions, because I can't, I can't see, obviously.
I think we're good. Anybody questions so far? I think we, you know, just dive in and let us know about the, kind of the site plan and what you're looking to do.
So, so as you, as you may know, the state of Illinois held a statewide cannabis application process for retail licenses. And essentially, in order to win, you had to have perfect scores. So PDI received perfect scores on every single application that we received. The state conducted the lottery almost exactly a year ago, actually, and we were very fortunate to win a license in Peoria, in Bloomington Normal, and in East St. Louis. And I have to give unending credit to our partner Leanne here. We actually were pretty far down the road of pursuing a property in Peoria and Leanne said we really should check out Peoria Heights. We all loved it, but we thought, well, I don't, I don't think it's feasible, I don't think there'd be a location. She stuck with it and thankfully we are, we are now here today and, and really excited about the opportunity to be in the Village. So if we skip to the second slide, I just wanted to provide some examples of what some of our stores look like. So these are some of the Project Cannabis stores that were under the MMAC umbrella. And then the next slide is the company that John Rushing, excuse me, James Rushing, worked for and then also helped develop. So Origins is the parent operator out of the Seattle area. They have a brand, Rosemary Jane, that you see there, and their stores are oriented towards sort of a Pacific Northwest, earthy feel, very natural, but, but also very high-end, much like Project Cannabis. And then Johnny, moving to the fourth slide, Johnny and Quentin and I opened with our social equity partner, the first social equity store in San Francisco. We did it as a partnership with a company called Cookies. It is branded as Burners on Hate and these are a couple images. You can actually see in this, the exterior shot of burners that we not only have commercial neighbors on our right and left, but we have residential neighbors above us, about a dozen in that building. So we are very, very experienced with being good neighbors who are quiet and do not emit odors and, and benefit the, the block that we serve. If, if you're familiar with the Haight-Ashbury in San Francisco at all, it's a little bit of a dicey neighborhood. You probably know its, its history with the Grateful Dead and Janis Joplin and the Summer of Love. Our block in, in the Haight is, I think, the safest block because of our presence, because we have professional security out there and lights and cameras and, and I think our neighbors appreciate that. We also attract a decent amount of foot traffic that has a spillover effect on surrounding businesses. And lastly, on the example stores, the next slide is our second store that Johnny and Quentin and I opened a few blocks away in San Francisco. This one was a partnership with a longstanding cannabis company called Harborside out of the Bay Area in California as well. And I just want to briefly bring to your attention the fact that if you look at these stores, the exterior shots, you will not see any cannabis leaves or anything about marijuana or any references to the plant. They are all very discreet. Burners now have a key sign out front, but it's, it's small and it just says Burners on Hate and likewise the Harborside store just says Harborside. So we are, we are very discreet and very committed to complying with the regulations that preclude us from having any sort of cannabis imagery or wording. And moving on to slide six, this is the project location. The, the village is geographically small enough that this probably wasn't necessary, but there's a big arrow showing where we are. And slide seven is just indicating that we are in compliance or the location is in compliance with Village Code, which requires us to be 1,500 feet away from a pre-existing dispensing organization. So we are three miles from Trinity on Glen, which to my knowledge is the closest store at this point, although one of the new ones that Peoria approved might be slightly closer. It certainly will not be within 1,500 feet. And then slide eight references the Village Code, which requires the dispensary to be at least 100 feet from a pre-existing preschool or school, daycare, park, library, substance abuse treatment or place of worship. And the gray circles that I've indicated there are approximately 100 feet. I just labeled what, what exists within those 100 feet buffers and as you can see, none of them are the excluded sensitive uses referenced in the code. It's medical office, car lot, et cetera. So this location as far as, we are aware complies with the location, location requirements under the villagers' codes and also under the state's requirements. Slide nine is a picture of the exterior of the project building. This is, as you probably know, a longtime retail building that was actually built by and has always been owned by Gary Temps, who is on the call with us, I believe, today. Well, the front retail space is currently vacant, that's about 1,600 square feet. The hairstylist in the rear retail space will be leaving in a couple months. And so our intent is to recombine these two spaces. We will invest about a half million dollars in tenant improvements to the building and sign a long-term lease with Gary. And with respect to signage, as I mentioned that previously, you can see the, the sign there on the curb. We will, we will just use that in the same way that previous tenants have and again, comply with, with local and state regulations regarding the use of cannabis imagery, et cetera. So it will be, it will be a very subtle use of that signage. Slide 10 shows the parking supply. These are Google satellite images here. So the, the front or main lot has eight or 10 spaces, depending on how we configure it. Those spaces will only be for customers. We will not allow our staff or security to park there, nor would we have our vendors park there. That would just be for customers and, and we want to make sure that we lay it out in a way that provides room for ingress, egress and flow. And obviously, we are not pursuing a curb cut onto War Memorial. That would generate more problems than it would solve. So we are, we're happy with the existing curb cut. And then the side alley on the backside of the building has an additional two parking spaces for staff and then likely we will do, actually, I can't say this for sure, but I, but I think that we will do vendor deliveries via that entrance, primarily for security purposes and, and easy access. And then in terms of parking demand on slide 11, I just wanted to give you a little bit of context. So at our current store, Burners on Hate in San Francisco, we have no parking. At the Harborside on Spanion, no parking. At the Project Cannabis store on Bryant Street in San Francisco, no parking. Likewise, the location on Harrison Street. And then the Project Cannabis store in Los Angeles has four parking spaces. So we are very accustomed to running these operations without parking and actually look at this building as almost more than we need for, for reasons I will explain in a second. Under the code, the Village Code, we are supposed to have one space per 300 feet of floor area. I think, and Gary can correct me here, that we are a smidge over 2,700 square feet, so if that rounds up to 10 parking spaces as opposed to nine, that would be the, the code requirement as far as we understand it. But I do want to give you a sense of the pipe of parking demand that we generate. So slide 12, I'll start with the graph on the top. What you're looking at there is the total number of orders and then the gray line is the value of those orders. So for, for the sake of this conversation, the purple bar is what's important. And what this, what this shows is that our, our customer volume is, is relatively well-distributed throughout the week. So we do see a spike on Friday and Saturday, but it's, it's by no means multiples of the previous days. It's a, it's an incremental spike. And I should say, this is, this is from one of our specific stores, but it reflects the trends we see across all of our stores, that you do see a little bit of a spike on Friday and Saturday, but in general, the, the customer volume is well-distributed throughout the week. And then if you go down to the graph below that, we actually parsed it out by hours of the day. And so this is all hours of all days of the week. This store, at the time this was done, was open from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So what you can see is a pretty smooth curve where it ramps up in the morning and is relatively consistent. We see a bit of a peak as people start to get off work around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock and then it tapers off. But in general, the demand is relatively consistent, relatively well-distributed during the day and, and during the week. So we don't, we don't tend to see large spikes unless it's something like 4:20 or there's a celebrity appearance or something. So I did a fair amount of math to bore everybody on the right side of this slide, but we anticipate around 200 transactions per day. So that's about 15 transactions per hour. And customers often arrive together, so that doesn't necessarily mean 15 cars per hour, but each customer visit is generally, they're generally in and out within 10 minutes. So at any given time, we would be generating a demand for about three parking spaces. Now, those are obviously averages using sort of theoretical math to some extent, but I just want to demonstrate the point that we don't generate a ton of parking. We don't see the type of customer volume that a grocery store would. We don't see the type of spikes in visits that a bar would. It's much more evenly distributed. So moving on to slide 13, this is one option for how we could lay out the front parking lot. What you see here is diagonal parking. It does allow for 10 spaces, although Leanne and I are curious if it might be possible to maybe make an additional one by the front door area. What you see there is the closest one to the building is the ADA space. The downside with this approach is that it likely requires the cars to back up and potentially back out of the lot onto Atlantic. The upside is that you get 10 spaces. And in either case, you'll see here that we have the two spaces in the alley- And in either case, you'll see here that we have the two spaces in the alley behind the building. But if we move ahead to the next slide, this is Option 2, where the cars are just parked straight in. It's much easier to navigate, but it's too fewer spaces. And in this one, it doesn't show a car in the ADA space, but that is an ADA space there. So in the Option 1 scenario, we're looking at 12 spaces total. In the Option 2 scenario, we're looking at 10 spaces total. We are eager to get your feedback on this issue because it seems like the majority of the feedback that we've gotten so far from the village officials is in regard to parking. So I wanted to make sure to go into a fair amount of detail about this and give you a sense of what we think our demand will be and what our options are with respect to layout. We are relatively agnostic and want to be responsive to your feedback. So we wanted to provide those two options. And then, as I mentioned, we do want to discuss the operating hours issue, although it sounds like this may already be moot with respect to your board. But currently, the Village Code says that we, cannabis dispensary cannot operate earlier than 8:00 a.m. or later than 7:00 p.m. The 8:00 a.m. issue is fine. We have no intention of opening at 7:00. Stoners don't get up that early. But the 7:00 p.m. issue is actually really important to us. In fact, it's a deal breaker for us. We cannot close at 7:00 p.m. As you see on this graph here, a good chunk of our business happens between 7:00 and 8:00, between 8:00 and 9:00, and in the case of this particular store, between 9:00 and 10:00. It actually represents over a fifth of all the revenue that this store generated during this period happens in that evening period. And there was some conversation when you were discussing this earlier about neighboring municipalities and neighboring stores. Peoria oversees or regulates cannabis businesses under Chapter 18, Article 19 of its municipal code. There is not, to my knowledge, any regulation in there about business hours. If those dispensaries in Peoria are making decisions to close at certain times, like I think Trinity on Glen closes at 7:00 p.m., as far as I know, that is a business decision. I don't think there's anything in Peoria code that requires them to do so. Likewise, under the State Cannabis Act, Section 15-70J, a dispensary may operate between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. is the state standard. So there are certainly some municipalities that impose tighter timelines. I don't think Peoria is one of them, but 7:00 p.m. would not work for us. It would just have too much of an impact on the business. And that's not to say that there's some huge run of customers at 8:00. It's just that there is a relatively broad distribution of customers throughout the day, and that later portion of the evening is very important to us. All that said, we do want to emphasize the benefits that we think this store can provide to the village and to the broader community. And this is the last slide. We anticipate creating about 20 jobs, about $300,000 in annual tax revenue to the village, activating and improving this partially vacant building and investing several hundred thousand dollars into its improvements and upkeep. We will be operating a discreet, attractive, and high-end store, as you saw in some of the example pictures. We have a world-class ownership team, onsite professional security during all business hours. Everything that we sell is safe, tested, and taxed and available only to adults. By encouraging the regulated legal cannabis market, we are discouraging the illegal cannabis market, which I assure you already exists. And part of our role in the legal market is to help push those folks out of business or at least out of town. And that is important to us. As I mentioned, we will make major tenant improvements in security, interior grounds, lighting, everything else to the building, provide expert service and guidance for both patients and customers, and importantly, generate net new economic activity in the village. Because to the extent people come from Peoria or east Peoria to shop at our store, those are dollars coming into the village that would not have come in were it not for our store. So it does generate a lot of benefits for the community and for the folks you serve. And with that, we are happy to hear your questions and feedback.
Thank you. Looking at your site plans, and you know this business, obviously, much better than anybody here does. You're saying that you don't have parking spots at most of your stores, but obviously those are very pedestrian-friendly areas. This probably isn't quite as much. I think one of the things people would be worried about is people sitting outside in their cars after they get some, sitting outside getting stoned in the parking lot. Does that happen?
Absolutely not. That will not happen. Our security would not allow that. So our security is posted at the door during all business hours, and they would not allow that.
Okay, great. How do you, and I don't know if anybody visited this, like I said, this isn't necessarily my vice of choice, but how do you handle the traffic in here? Not the vehicle traffic, but the customer traffic? I mean, I've seen these out in Colorado, and people just kind of walk in and out. I think it's different in Illinois, but...
You're right. In Illinois, we're required to have sort of an entry vestibule, kind of an entry security room, which the customer enters first, and that is where their identification is confirmed, and then they're given access to the retail floor. So it's sort of a two-step process. California and Oregon and Washington don't have that. I haven't been to a store in Colorado, honestly, so I can't say for sure. But a lot of jurisdictions do. Illinois is one of them. And so it makes it a little bit easier to control flow on the retail floor because you're sort of limiting it on the front end. In either scenario, we check identification before anybody can get in. So the only difference is that in California, that happens at the front door, and then the person walks in, whereas in Illinois, it happens in this entry room.
Okay, so you do have more or less an entry lounge that they'll sit around and wait till IDs are checked?
I wouldn't anticipate a lot of waiting, certainly not a lot of sitting. We want people moving into the retail floor, and we are, we're a high-turnover business. We want people's transactions to be quick. Obviously, if they have questions and they want to talk to our staffers, that's a big part of what we do. But we want people to be able to move through the process as quickly as possible. And so we don't want to keep people waiting in that entry room unless there's some reason, unless there's maybe like a capacity issue.
All right, thank you.
How many staff are on at any given time?
You've got security, which are contracted, so that will be one or two, depending on the time of day and day of week. And then in the store, you would have usually a manager on duty, and then at the minimum, probably two, as high as, probably seven. Quentin might correct me on that one, but you know, for a day like 4:20, for example, that would probably, that'd be your peak staff. You might have a dozen people working, but on your average Tuesday, it might be only three or four.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like we could have some parking situations, then, if you're going to have seven vehicles for staff?
Well, we don't accept the premise that every one of our staffers is going to be driving through this to work in their own car. We strongly discourage that. For one thing, we try as best as we can to hire directly from the community. For another, we encourage our staff to arrive via other means. So I don't think if we had seven staffers, that would necessarily generate seven cars. But you're right, there may be some need above and beyond those two that we have in the back that might be filled by street parking or some other means.
All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments? I mean, so the parking is something that's come up a couple of times. You say you don't have any parking in any of the other facilities, but I would imagine in California and Los Angeles, those places are a little different than Peoria Heights, Illinois on Prospect, off of Prospect and War Memorial. So people are going to probably be arriving by car, even if they're coming from the baseball games, softball games, like they were talking about. So I, obviously, looking at the site plans, Option 2 is better. The idea of backing out onto a side street that's right off of War Memorial doesn't seem to be a good idea at all. So I think we'd probably be in somewhat of agreement of Site Plan Option 2. Would everybody somewhat agree with that? Which gives you, you know, we're going to assume the back spots are going to be taken by employees. How many, I didn't hear that, how many employees, they say?
They said they could have up to seven.
Up to seven, so...
There are two spots.
There's two spots in the back, up to potentially seven employees. So we do kind of see parking as a potential issue here.
Because Peoria Heights is pedestrian-friendly, is some of the other places you've got here.
Not necessarily in this spot, it is.
Right, not this spot.
There's no light at all, if I remember correctly, so there will be potential backup, trying to get out onto War. Turn left.
Turning left out of this, then...
With these numbers, though, that's not kind of, it's not like the gas station we're talking about, where there's going to be a heavy flow. It's, you know, it's going to be here and there, just like people going to the florist that is or was over there, you know? It's a low-key retail thing.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sure there's, you know, if there's off-street parking, there's other things back besides there, on the side streets, I'm sure you could set up something for the employees that, you know, just basically the employees aren't allowed to park at the front lot.
No, they wouldn't.
Yeah, find a parking spot somewhere. Don't piss off the neighbors.
Yep. So... Go ahead.
Can I interject really quickly?
Yeah.
So I know I've said that we're agnostic, but to be honest, we probably prefer Option 2 as well. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't bias the conversation and to show you the decision process that we're going through. If anybody asks, well, why did you cut it down to eight spaces? It's really about ingress and egress and making that safe. I think Option 1 would be a little tricky. So we're probably on the same page there. And just to elaborate on my previous point, we try to incent our employees to carpool, to bike, to walk, whatever it may be. And again, we try to hire them, we try to hire people who live as close to the store as possible. So I know that San Francisco is sort of a different animal with respect to car use, but nobody ever described Los Angeles as pedestrian-friendly or not car-dependent. And we're able to do this there. So if we can do it there, we can do it in the village.
Okay.
It got me there.
Maybe when you come back with the site plan for actual approval, if you were listening the whole time, Cigar Lounge is looking at leasing or subleasing spots from nearby businesses. That might be a good option for you. I think there's a few businesses that might have some extra spots nearby that might alleviate our concerns on parking.
You'll get your time. We'll open it up to public conversation in a minute. Any other questions here?
I'm good.
Questions?
I'm fine.
Okay. Mark, anything that you want to...
Nothing from where I'm...
Okay. So open it up to public comments, public questions. Ma'am, you had a question? Go ahead.
Do I need to speak in the speaker?
Yeah, maybe so that our gentleman that we're talking to can hear us.
Hello, Connor.
Connor, can you hear?
I can, yes.
Okay.
I just want to be respectful so you could at least hear what I asked. I previously rented from the property across Atlantic, and it actually has, I'm going to echo the result that you guys came up with, which is Site Plan 2, but I just want to say, I rented at 1105 East War Memorial for more than a decade, and they have the slanted spots, and you have to back out to get onto Atlantic in order to exit. I want you to know, it was terrible. I adore the landlord, I adored the location. I didn't stay for over a decade because I didn't like it. But I want you to know, the parking that is being described with the slant and the back out, it totally didn't work. And that's actually my first question. I don't have the privilege of seeing the site plan right now, so how are people getting out if they don't do that? Because I don't see a way you could drive through that site. Like, do they drive through and go out on the alley or something?
Yeah, you can look at it.
Forgive me, I don't know.
You drive in and park straight, and then you should have the room to back out.
You can have it.
I'm just really familiar with this area. Okay, so they back out and back in, but you can back in and back out.
You can swing your tail end back towards the building and then head out straight.
Okay, I don't want to take your...
No, it's fine.
Thank you. I would share with you, having done it and having had, I do work with older people, and having older people do that, it's not the way you want to do it. So I would affirm the concept of Site Plan 2 because you don't have to back out and only go backwards. That was my first question. My second question is, I am very curious about this concept of the, you called it the social equity model versus the standard business model where only the owners take home a share. I am curious, do you offer employees a possibility of, what do they call it, savings investment plan where they can buy company stock? It doesn't have to be stock. But do you have any way that community members in Peoria Heights can participate in the financial success of this organization? Is that what the social equity model is? Forgive me, I don't really know.
Did you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead and answer, yeah.
We don't know.
Tell us a little bit more about the social equity model and options for employees in particular.
The concept behind social equity and cannabis is to try to remedy some of the harms that were inflicted upon communities of color during the decades of cannabis criminalization. Black people in particular endured much higher rates of arrest and incarceration for cannabis offenses, even though they did not and don't use cannabis at a statistically significant higher rate than white people. So social equity is defined differently in different jurisdictions. It usually means offering some sort of priority to people who have previous cannabis offenses and/or who live in areas that had disproportionately high enforcement, and/or are military veterans, local residents, graduates of the public school system. Again, different jurisdictions have different criteria that they use. In the case of Illinois, they gave additional points for Illinois residents, for military veterans, and for people who had cannabis offenses or who had a close family member who had a cannabis offense. So social equity refers to the idea of giving additional points or prioritization to ownership teams that include someone who fits that description or multiple people who fit that description. It does not include what you're describing, which sounds more like a community ownership model, like the Green Bay Packers. While I love the concept, it actually would not really be compliant with the State Cannabis Act because as an owner, you would then become what's called the principal officer and be required to have a fingerprint check and a background check, and it just becomes a bit untenable, although a great idea.
I know companies can do that sort of thing with their employees, even if they don't grant shares. Just saying, there are mechanisms to make it so that there can be more participation potentially. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate the description. I know I got kids living in California, not in San Fran or, where was your other one? L.A.? But San Jose is not that far. So especially with the pandemic and everybody's working at home anyway. Have a great day. Thanks.
So what you're talking about is like a, called a phantom stock program, synthetic equity?
I would just offer that if we're going to be in this position to attract this kind of a business with that kind of revenue coming in, I think it would be beautiful if the community could benefit. And the sales tax revenue was great. I just want to... I just want, and you know, even, um, employing people who are in walking distance of that location is not a bad thing. And, um, I would share, um, for Connor, who may or may not already have researched this, but we do have a bicycle sort of friendly space, and maybe that could be part of the arrangement. I know there's a bicycle group that runs up and down Monroe, for example, which is just a block away. So, you know, there, there are other ways, and I think the concept of, um, hiring local people with those attributes makes sense, and, um, it could be really good. And I guess I, as a financial planner, I'm a CPA also. I mean, I don't know, there's all kinds of good ways for people to be part of the community and benefit for taking the step to be more welcoming than Peoria, for example, for a business like this. So that is a piece of how I think about it.
Is there anybody else here to ask about this or have questions or comments about the dispensary? Anyone else? Okay, anybody else?
Can I just make a couple last comments?
Sure.
Uh, one thing, I, I mentioned that, uh, retail tenants in the back will be leaving soon. That's not necessarily public knowledge, uh, even though I just said it on the record at a public meeting, so, uh, hopefully we can keep that as discreet as possible. And obviously, as I mentioned, our, our prospective landlord, Gary, is on the call. If anyone has any questions for him about the history of the use of the building or the parking, I just wanted to offer that too, and thank Gary for joining us, and, and thank you for hearing us out.
You got it. Any other questions for Gary? Anybody else?
So for us, since this discussion, we're planning forward since he wants guidance. If we're looking at, are you on option number two?
Yep.
We're looking at a parking variance. We're looking at the new ordinance being passed for business hours because he's essentially says if we don't expand hours, they're not coming.
Right.
Are there other things that we're looking at as variances at this point, or is it just gonna be those two?
I don't have a copy of the site plan. I have not scrutinized it for zoning compliance issues. I'd be happy to do that using the site plan, uh, number two option, it sounds like.
Right.
And, uh, clearly it will require a parking variance, not significantly.
Well, hold on, option two gives 10 spots if you include the spots in the back, and right now, you're saying it's nine, round up 10.
I think that would work, and it wouldn't be...
So technically, I think the parking, there is no need for parking.
I forgot that parking doesn't discriminate between employee and employee.
Exactly.
Right. But if he does want to check into additional spaces, if you are gonna have seven employees at one time, you might encourage them all to, uh, take their bikes, but...
Yeah, that might, that may or may not happen.
On a January day.
Not everybody wants to take their bikes.
Yeah, definitely not January, similar to Los Angeles.
But as a, a parking variance, which sounds like it's not gonna be required, it's really just site plan approval.
Just site plan approval.
I'm sorry. Special use approval, same criteria as site plan, but...
Right. Well, the, now, you know, he's saying, um, 10 o'clock. Our approval for a later time is only nine o'clock.
Correct.
Um, so, he's saying the state, state law is 10.
Right.
Uh, he's saying it's a break, break, deal breaker, but is that a deal breaker at nine or is that a deal breaker at 10? What's that?
Do we know who requested the amendment?
Yeah, who did request the amendment?
Um...
That's a great...
Dustin?
This, I mean, this was from conversations with Connor through...
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Nine o'clock was what I recall.
So nine o'clock came from you, Connor? You were in your group?
Connor, did you get that?
Guys?
Sorry, I, I muted. Uh, I, you know, we have, uh, I, I think what, what we're really requesting on that is the option to stay open until 10. We generally would be fine with nine, but if it's a Friday night and there's some big event or the day before 4:20, we like to have that option. One of our stores in San Francisco, for example, is open like nine AM to 10 PM, but on Sundays, we only do 11 to eight, just because we realized we didn't really need the hours on Sunday. So we just like, we like to have some flexibility on that. Uh, I wouldn't say that nine to 10 is necessarily a deal breaker for us, uh, but we would like to have that option if we, if the business needed there.
Okay.
So what's the process if we don't propose another amendment for 10? We do nine, they accept that movement, they need extra time where they think they do? Would that just be another amendment?
We can ask it.
Okay. And they can request that at any time?
They can.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so let's sit with what we got.
Yeah.
Definitely we can ask it.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Uh, Connor, I've got some questions. Uh, James's sites, does he have any in Honolulu or is it all on the Big Island?
Oh geez, Leanne or Quentin, do you guys know that?
I do not know. I want, I want to say it's all on the Big Island, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. I've got friends from Hawaii that work for stores, so I want to know if maybe they work for you guys, but they're all in Hawaii, so I don't think they have a problem.
I wish I was working, I wish I was working for us guys on, on any of the islands.
That's all we got.
Okay. I think that's all the questions and comments we got, guys. Thanks for your time, and appreciate everybody else's time here in the audience. If that, uh, ends everything, that concludes, and we have a motion to adjourn the meeting. Steve in a second, and Mick sends seconds then. All right, have a good day doing it, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.